Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Montgomery Township School District Board of Education Public Meeting on this Tuesday, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The time is now eight oh nine P M. Please forgive us and we will apologize, but our second session agenda items led to the delay. With this start time, we're going to open public meeting and we may need your participation and your patience and your presence. So, please.
Yes, Mr. Carlson, here, Ms. Dowling.
Here.
Ms. Skelak.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Spina.
Present.
Ms. Sola, good journey.
Here.
Mr. Todd.
Here.
Ms. Ringo Herman. Dr. Smith Wallace.
Present, everyone, please rise from the black seat.
For the United States of America, and to all the people who stand next to us, one nation of America, we give this all for the great and successful law.
Thank you, everyone, please be seated. And before we hear from Ms. Sophia Brown with the community representative report, I would just like to ask everyone to join in the public membership of education in a moment of silence for two reasons. And they're not conflicted, they're separate. One, I was made aware this week by Secretary Pete Todd that a family in our power township experienced a sudden tragic loss of the father. Of the father and the family in our hearts. Thoughts and prayers go out, action has already commenced among the community for this family. And thank you to those, thank you so much to those community members who have been swift in their kindness and their empathy for this family. And then secondly, for the unfortunate continued loss of life in the Middle East, particularly in Gaza, recognizing, you know, that all of our life, no matter to whom we worship, has value and significance. And there are particularly, I've heard members of the community express feelings about the loss of life of our young people, our children, who are defenseless in those moments. So please just join us in a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. So Ms. Ralph, if you have a question for the board, please.
Good evening, Board of Education and members of the community. The students of Montgomery County School are well. This December, we recognize Universal Community Rights Month and International Community Rights Day by focusing on respecting, embracing, and celebrating the differences we have within our MHS community. Our school has been filled with quality cheer all along, but the MHS music department has been so many fun event. On the thirteenth, the Windmill's Hobbles, Symphony Band, and Chamber Orchestra all had a successful winter concert. Coming up on the twentieth, at seven P M. in the upcoming Columbia Arts Center, is the Winter Concert featuring the Symphonic Wings, Concert Orchestra, and Symphony Orchestra. Additional mental health resources remain available to students at the beginning of this month, as we recognize that the holidays are not a cheerful time for all. Our boys' basketball team remains undefeated with a recent win against Pangree, and congratulations to the girls' basketball team for their victory against Rossbury. We are wishing all of our winter sports athletes good luck and a great rest of their season. Our students are working hard on and off the sports field with the December S E T beginning of this month, and a huge congratulations to all of the New National Honor Society employees as the ceremony was held earlier this month. MHS's Educated the Year recipient was revealed earlier this month as social studies teacher and football coach, Mr. Ryan Village, a teacher who inspires greatness in his students on and off the sports field. Coach Village embodied the idea that only takes one adult to change the life of the child. We thank him for all of us. The MHS Chamber Choir is continuing their tradition of district-wide carol this week in his all-renewed and upcoming winter home week break. MHS students will have the gift of a dismissal and a school concert on Friday. And the student body of MHS is wishing everyone celebrating this holiday season with joy, comfort, and peace for the rest of the year.
Thank you, Ms. Ralph, for that report. And now we will move along to an hour of agenda for the superintendent's report and the board's presentation.
Good evening, everyone. As Sophia just said, winter sports, not only at the high school, but in the middle school, are in full bloom, and auditions for the Spring Musical, the Havens Family, have already taken place at the high school. The students are involved busy in cheering one another in the middle of the classroom. As stated earlier, our student musicians are filling the buildings with beautiful sounds. We are in the midst of our winter concert series, that Windmill's Hobbles, Symphony Orchestra, Symphony Orchestra Band, Chamber Orchestra performed this past Wednesday, and everyone is invited to come and enjoy the MHS Winds, Symphony Orchestra, and Concert Orchestra at seven P M. tomorrow in the Empire. The Chamber Choir will continue the tradition of caroling throughout the school district schools on the twenty-first. Students have had the opportunity to celebrate the musical accomplishments of their peers and enjoy a school-wide concert this Friday. Montgomery High School will be observing the annual homework free break during the winter break. We encourage all students and staff to decompress and spend recharging and celebrating time with family and friends. Either winter or gloom or heavy rain could stop LMS certified teams from participating in the three K jingle all the way race on Sunday, December third. The LMS team earned over fifteen hundred dollars for the Special Olympics in New Jersey. Fifth and sixth grade bands began the holiday season with two outstanding evening band concerts that filled the LMS cafeteria with families enjoying. In addition to joining us on performance nights, the families of LMS beginning band members stopped in for an open house presentation during one of the December classics. LMS is gearing up for the Spring Musical, Finding Nemo. Two hundred and seventy-eight fifth and sixth graders expressed an interest in being part of the cast and crew by submitting video auditions. We are always so proud and grateful for everyone's interest and excitement for our school productions. January will host LMS fifth and sixth grade orchestra concerts and fifth and sixth grade choral concerts. Jazz band auditions will also start in January. Please take a look at our district calendar for all of our schools' concerts. On behalf of Montgomery Township School District, I wish you and your families a safe, healthy, and happy holidays. Enjoy the winter.
Ladies and gentlemen, so at this time, we have our first public comment, which is specific to our action agenda items and instructions are as follows. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allowed of an opportunity to address the board regarding the action agenda items only. Ten maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Before you make your comment, please state your name and address and write vote in the Chromebook for live. Being mindful of privacy rights regarding students, board employees, board members, and to avoid any liability on the part of the speaker, the board discovers this defamatory and discourteous remarks. The public comment forces of the meeting are not structured as Q and A sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities for the public to share their thoughts with the board. The board will need to refer a letter to the superintendent or her team if the issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command typically starting at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of this session. Seeing and hearing none, we will move to our committee and representative reports. Starting with our E T A report, Mr. Gentile.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. Hope everyone had a good day. Yes, there's a vibe of a flood flooding around the community. It seems that we can't get away from a flood day every year, every other year. But I am thankful to have our grounds, our maintenance, and custodial group, and also our director of facilities really hold our whole district together, check, make sure that eliminate any problems or put a bucket on their leaking roof if it happens to be leaking. So really grateful for those guys who were able to make it in and make it in and take care of our school district. As you've heard already through some of the reports, it's really an amazing time of the year, holidays upon us right now. There's so many celebrations, school spirit days, and sing-alongs, and luncheons, concerts. It's really an amazing time. So many have taken place already, as you've heard, but we have a lot more planned throughout the rest of the week, and I look forward to attending some of those as well. It's just really magical to see a whole audience in one of the building just get together and sing together. It really does. It's an amazing experience if you've never seen it in the building. I also like the thing about PTAs, they've been doing so much over this month, really, providing all kinds of goodies, sweet treats, and cookies, and you name it, drinks and so forth. And you won't believe how far just a little cookie will go if you're having a bad day, or a little treat will go. So it's really great, they appreciate it by all the staff members, so I do want to share that generosity from the PTA and appreciation from all the staff here in Montgomery. And lastly, I just want to wish everyone a happy and healthy new year, and everyone be safe, enjoy your break. So a real short one for me tonight, so enjoy.
Great, thank you, Mr. Dole. So our Board of Delegated Representatives reports.
I actually have a report on something that Joanna and I attended back in November. It's our Somerset County, just pull that up.
Is it the New Jersey School Board of Somerset County?
Yeah. So our Somerset County School Board Association actually carries monthly meetings that allow for board members in Somerset County to join each other and share insight on how they are working through some of their changes, or how have they been successful in execution of their initiatives. But in this particular meeting, what was really interesting is there was a specific board from Bound Brook that has really showed a lot of shift and change within the board over the last year. The members have not changed, but they managed to kind of leverage each other's strengths and really reassess the way that they collaborated and functioned. And what we found so interesting is that the gentleman that actually runs, now is the president of the board, was actually nominated to be the first vice president of Somerset County School Board Association because of his excellent work. I think, you know, this was one of those meetings that was very insightful. There was a lot of shared information around bylaws and bylaw changes, and also there was a lot of information shared on, as board members, how do we have all different kinds of advisory opinions on how we're in different situations and how those should be handled. So I just wanted to share this with the broader board because I think it would be beneficial for us to perhaps attend those together as the board so we can have a lot of that insight. The beauty of those meetings is that they're both virtual and in person. They're at the VOTEC school in Bridgewater. We are served fabulous dinner by the local chefs, so, and it's just a very pleasant way to kind of share information, learn from one another, learn of the successes of other boards that are very much recognized in these sessions. So I just, we've attended a couple of them, but the last one, I think, stuck with us the most because the nominations that were coming in to fairly new board members to participate in that structure. So I just wanted to use this time to share it with the board. Thank you.
Thank you, board member. Well, I'll have to turn the page. And at this time, I would share that I had the pleasure of attending the delegate assembly for the New Jersey School Board on Saturday, December second. It was lining into twelve P M. at the Mercer County Community College Conference Center. So Dr. Tim Perdell, he's the executive director for the New Jersey School Boards Association. He announced that he's going to be launching a podcast series titled The Board Room, and that will commence on January tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. He stated that he was intentional, was scheduled in during the average lunchtime, which is twelve P M. to one P M., and I believe it will run through to June, and then he'll reassess. The podcast will be archived, so any board member anywhere may access the recorded podcast at any time. He also delivered the executive director's report that day, and he said that New Jersey School Board is focusing on ensuring offering tools and resources to effectively govern New Jersey's public schools, concentrating on three strands: content, connection, and advocacy, with advocacy emphasizing advocating to advance the success of every child. Content includes a reboot of the government's one requirement for all new board members. So the School Board Association has formed a committee, and it consists of their own staffing and various board members throughout New Jersey who have been evaluating and updating the materials and lessons in that course and active engagement from all board members in New Jersey. Next year, this committee will look at the government's two modules, the requirement for new board members setting here in office, and apply any collaborative review on changes. And those enhancements report like expertise to help with cultivating a positive culture and climate among boards. And then the connections piece, he reported speaks to the three Rs: roles, responsibilities, and resources. So in J E S B A, the School Board Association currently supports over two thousand members. Wow. And then there's advocacy, which involves addition A preschool expansion, bringing together board members and lawmakers, initiatives to alleviate school staff shortages, and expanding the School Board Association's federal-level advocacy assessment. So they'll continue to review, for example, the new state legislative agenda and align it with their goals. That's communicated to them by board members in New Jersey. And one of them is demonstrated with the new teacher certification legislation that allows more flexibility for districts to address the teacher shortage, although we recognize that this is, was growing to become a complex issue. The elected president reported that she's visiting counties in New Jersey and plans to attend more soon. The announcement was made for the New Jersey School Boards Association Annual Conference for two thousand and twenty-four, and those dates are October twenty-first to October twenty-four. So then after the parliamentarian, the School Board Association as a parliamentarian, as a part of their executive board, explained Robert's rules, there were five resolutions that were presented, discussed, and then voted for. And all the motions carried, with exception to the second one that involved non-English-speaking career and technical education or CTE teachers who are skilled craftsmen to be eligible for alternative certification requirements, as well as being paired with the English speaking teacher counterpart. The book bans resolution passed, that was the name of it, but then they did adjust it, as well as new language for graduation cohort coding in J Smart. All the educators and members will know what that is. It's how the public school districts in New Jersey communicate with the State Department of Education of their students, students enrolled in those districts in all grades. Pre-employment efforts to improve physical and emotional abuse, not just the past the trash, which includes the sexual abuse, and modification of board of education members that are part of the VOTEC school districts to be included in the School Boards Association nominee committee. It was the first time that I had attended. It was exciting to interface with board members across the state, to hear the discussions pertaining to district concerns and vote on the related resolutions. As I stated, the delegates twice a year in May and December, and it's my hope, sitting there and observing the process, since it was my first time, that I might, I want to work together to formulate and present a resolution to school boards for the next assembly meeting, delegate meeting in Manhattan.
Are there any other delegate or representative reports at this time? Board members, do you have an equity committee report for today?
Yeah.
I just spoke to the board a little bit. Secretary Pete Todd, you will please deliver the operations, facilities, and finance committee report. Give myself a little break before we do that E C I.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam President. Operation Facility Finance Committee met on Friday, December eighth. We had several items to discuss, the first being the ESRA amendment, which we referred to last month. As this administrator, Mr. Jack Trent, mentioned, that we have about one point four million dollars in ESRA funds that have been spent by the district. Those monies are from the federal government, and with an emphasis on safety. Those items that we will be spending the remaining funds on include safety improvement to the turf field, security cameras, radios, and transportation. Mr. Trent stated that the approval for all of these expenses have been approved by both the county and the state, so we're good to go on spending those funds. And just a reminder, we don't spend, anything that we do not spend, it has to go back to the federal government. He also explained the process of having these amendments approved, as I said before, was approved by the county and the state, goes to the county for review and approval, then goes to the state with their review and approval, since they have federal funds. And as I stated before, any unspent funds will go back to the federal government. Mr. Trent also stated that the security cameras need to be replaced at the high school. Currently, LMS does not have security cameras, therefore funds will be used to install them there, and we'll be looking to upgrade the security cameras at B S in Orchard Hill. We also talked about the purchase of radios. There were two kinds of radios, one which will allow employees in each building to talk to each other internally, and the second set would be center radio, which will allow for communication across the district. And this also involves upgrading and installing repeaters so that to mitigate any desloids in the district. Last part of the ESRA funds will be security items related to transportation. We'll be having tablets provided to each bus along ID cards for students in grades K to eight, which will allow us to ensure student safety and accountability. These student ID cards can also be used for purchasing meals in the cafeteria. Second item we talked about, the land purchase. Mr. Trent informed us that there's a tract of land which is located by the stadium, which is overrun and has been for quite some time. This land is actually, is currently owned by the Department of Corrections. The superintendent is in discussions to possibly acquire that land from the state and the Department of Corrections and to use it to build more athletic fields. Ultimately, this will save the district money because there will not be a need for transportation to bring hatchbacks students to U M S to use its fields. We also discussed meeting dates. Mr. Trent noted that the Board of Education meetings are at the end of the month. This is done due to business office operations and basically the compiling of financial reports. He's recommending that the O F F committee meetings be moved to the Friday prior to the board meeting to allow the financial reports to be available for the committee's review. Mr. Trent also gave the budget update. Mr. Trent will be meeting with budget managers this week, or next week, this, sorry, last weekend, this week. Specifically, he reviewed the facility budget, and his job is for really many items that are not financially feasible or items that should go through a referendum. He also noted, we also talked about the hiring of operating and maintenance supervisor. In the long run, this position will save us money because we don't have to hire landscapers and vendors to perform similar functions, and that person will oversee our grounds department to ensure that the work is being done. And that is it. Any questions, board members? Committee members?
No. We're going to get pretty close to spending all of the ESRA funds? I don't want the money back to the federal.
Correct.
Yes, we're spending all the money.
All right.
He assures us that is not an issue.
Do we have any indication about the land purchase? Is that going to happen? Is that a viable choice for us, or everybody? I'm not sure yet.
Yes, very, very preliminary.
Sorry?
Very preliminary discussion. Very preliminary discussion.
Preliminary, not, sorry. Looked like I couldn't hear you.
No, no problem.
Not that half should have been.
Yeah, and it looks like a half month.
No. I mean, no. Not the one that's behind your sock off. Oh, I thought it was on my last.
I thought it was on my last. So it's not about buying our idea of not letting space. Any other questions or comments for Elizabeth? So now we're here for the board chair, Michelle Nally, for policy and communications committee. We have not had since last meeting, we're getting our first. They were here.
Hey, thank you for that update. So the Assessing Curriculum and Instruction Committee, that on end day, December sixth, it was a hybrid meeting, Damian Papa, Assistant Superintendent, and I, service co-chairs of that committee. At the beginning of the meeting, the high school principal had a keynote meeting recorded about artificial intelligence, by stating that during mid-year, the high school sent out information about A I and integrity of it to parents and students. The high school's leadership team is engaged in a project focusing on A I. There's a team of teachers representing every area in the school. She stated that they're looking to harness the power of A I and to use it to help students be prepared academically and to improve their studying efforts. She stated creativity has no bounds with A I. We want to raise it and educate everyone about it, including academic integrity. Next year, they'll be getting the A I components returned on at the technology end, at the elementary levels, K eight on Chromebooks. They have inherent filtration from the GoGuardian service, and they block questionable A Is. That filtration is maintained on nine hundred twelve student-stable accounts, but at home, they will be able to get A I that is not being filtered. The GoGuardian service offers some abilities, such as a stolen device to help find devices. So then, Mr. Corey Delgado, I'm the Director of Counseling and Wellness in the District, provided updates and reformatting of the twenty-four, twenty-five, do I have that school year correct, Mr. Powell? Yes. Program of Studies. There's been an effort to ensure consistency, the format of the high school program of studies, and the language next year. Additionally, the updating of that year's program of studies reflects changes in course titles and expectations, as well as the addition of the Graviton Valley Community College to the description for the new dual enrollment options, specifically as it relates to option two, and dates and deadlines for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Equity and access to STEM education has been and continues to be a top priority of the Montgomery High School Science Department. The college board recommends that students have included geometry prior to enrollment in a in A P Physics One. The change to the A P Physics One language in the twenty-four, twenty-five program of studies is intended to enhance opportunities for student seeking and algebra-based physics courses. Such a change will now allow for high graders who have completed geometry to participate in A P Physics One. In the World Languages section of the twenty-four, twenty-five program of studies, language was added to prevent the seal of violator's C. There will be new courses added to the program of studies. So in area of social studies, A P Psychology, the social studies department would like to broaden its A P course offerings. The A P Psychology course is an often sought-after course that has never been offered in this district before. And it will be a full-year course that will introduce students to the systemic and or systematic and scientific study of human behavior and the mental processes. This course will be offered to students in grades ten through twelve. For A P World History, the social studies department would like to broaden its A P course offerings as well. So that's the, I'm sorry, the name of the course is A P World History Modern. And that course will allow students to build on their understanding of world history from C twelve hundred, B C twelve hundred to the present, through analyzing historical sources and learning to make connections and craft historical arguments as they explore concepts like humans and the environment, cultural developments and interactions, governance, economic systems, social interactions, organization, technology, innovation, and more. And that course will be offered to students in grades ten through twelve. A C P level economics course is going to be added. And that will be a semester-long course, which I think is, a semester is two marking periods, I believe. And that course will allow students who are not prepared to take A P Economics the opportunity to engage in introductory material and learn the basic concepts of the course. And that course will be offered to students in grades ten through twelve. An honors level contemporary issues and leadership course. And the social studies department is willing to expand its semester elective courses for our student population. So that course will occur with students to adopt a global perspective and take global action in response to current challenges. By keeping a close eye on current events, students will explore both national and international issues and delve into the connections between them. And this exploration will involve class discussions, research projects, and presentations. And that course will be offered to students in grades eleven and twelve. A C P level, the history of everything. So the social studies department is in need, again, of those types of elective courses. And so in that course, the students will explore different scales of time and space and view, human history from new angles as they learn what we know and what we don't know, consider our place in the universe, and develop their own ideas for what the future may hold. And that course will be offered along with contemporary issues and leadership and again, offered to students in grades ten through twelve. The Career and Technology Education Foundations of Python, that will be a C P college prep level course. And that will be a semester-long course where students will be introduced to the basic principles of programming through the use of the Python language. So Python's simple syntax is similar to the English language, making it, hopefully making it easy to comprehend and allowing programmers to write code of fewer lines. Course content includes learning the rules and syntax of Python, understanding and developing algorithms using variables and expressions, functions, selection statements, and looping those statements. Students will learn how to design, write, and debug computer programs using the Python language. And that course will be offered to students in all the high school grades. Jermaine Two, the Visual and Performing Arts, the new college prep level course title, School of Rock Modern Band. And that's a term used by the National Association for Music Education to refer to curricular music ensemble classes where the repertoire is focused on popular music. This semester-long course will be in music ensemble class where students will learn and perform covers of popular music as well as originals. And so the genres in that course of music will vary depending on student interest. So it's like a student voice of choice opportunity, which is always fun and engaging. And may include rock, folk, pop, jazz, country, hip-hop, and more. And that course will be offered to students in grades nine through twelve. And that concludes my B A C I recording for this evening. The board really enjoyed the discussion at this month's B A C I meeting. How, which is really impressed with how the staff has been being very intentional and the collaboration that exists among all the stakeholders in how we actually listen and are engaged. The community members comment and send emails. And we see this actually taking place in this, these enhancements and these upgrades and opportunities of learning in various areas in our high school programming setting. So do board members have any questions or comments at this time?
Yeah, thanks, I just, I wanted to cite a couple of things you just said. One was this history of everything class, I would like to take that. It's actually that's the confusing part of my history.
I think the kids, I think the students will enjoy that course too.
Yeah, and the other thing, and you just brushed on it, we've been talking about it recently, is I really think, I said this, there's a storm in terms of A I, so I'm glad we're starting to think about it.
Thank you for your feedback, board member Carlson, board member speaking.
Just a question about the number of social studies elective. Is this like as a part of, I don't know, the review for studies? Like is it part of a program review through the social studies department?
I'm sorry, is this a what?
A program review, part of a program review for social studies?
No, these are in addition to.
Well, this is just a course in addition.
Yes.
Now that there weren't enough courses for any social studies for students to have a good enough or broad enough opportunity for all of them.
The social studies supervisor and now superintendent McLaughlin to respond as well. Just repeatedly communicating, providing more opportunities in the, for history or social studies elective course opportunities for students. Because they did find that they need to increase in hand, so children can have an opportunity to take other courses in the subject areas that are related either to current events or other historical topics that don't get covered in the regular course curriculum for history. Superintendent McLaughlin will expand on that.
Kind of said it, it's like exploring ages of students and putting them into elective classes, whether they be full-year or semester courses, to just give children more opportunities for electives in different areas.
And how, that also had a course that's sort of, say, designing.
Oh, absolutely.
And there are teachers for it and they're excited about it?
No, the next step, so getting it into the course is the first step. And the second step is the student interest and then seeing if we have the correct number of personnel for it. It's like a multi-step process, but first you have to have the course approved before you can even ask the interest.
Interest with the staff?
Absolutely.
Teach these classes? I'd buy the students, because there's that line in there that says sought-after course. So is that meaning it's from the students that are looking to take these courses? Or are we just going to offer them?
Correct.
Yes, the staffing at the high school were approached by a group of students. And this has been over the years, because I asked about, was this formal or informal data collection? And the principal and the supervisors responded with yes, both formal and informal. So it's really, we threw meetings and discussions and conversations with parents, over the years, students, all the various stakeholder groups, previous boards of education, and what those members were communicating, you know, during the various committee meetings. So it's really been like this comprehensive effort in upgrading and enhancing the program of studies. And the reason that it's twenty-four, twenty-five, because we're following the protocol and the steps.
So I'm very excited to see the foundations of Python. Mary, are we going to be able to find someone who can teach? Do we have teachers within this school district that are interested? Because I presume this will be like an extension too.
Yes.
Do you think first demonstrating the course approved and then looking at staffing and the board?
Great questions and comments, and you can leave further. You can teach that. So the next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. So we just recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes. We're going to record twenty-first executive session and business meeting. I will, that the Board of Education approves those aforementioned minutes, dates, and topic at this time.
Second.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Ms. Dowling.
I need to abstain, I'm sorry, I don't have time to leave down.
Ms. Hulak.
Yes.
Ms. Hulak. Ms. Nina.
Yes.
Ms. Lepidurney.
Yes.
Mr. Todd.
Yes.
Ms. Snetswals.
Yes.
Thank you for pushing carries.
Thank you, Board Secretary Trent. So the Montgomery Township, who is the Board of Education and the knowledge is the correspondence to the board as published on page three of the season's agenda. And now we reach the part where we have our new business from the public to the Board of Education. And the action agenda, public comment instructions remain applicable. The Board Secretary Trent and Assistant Palanca, our new business from the public to the Board of Education will start now.
Good evening, my name is Dr. Allen Hackel. I am a staff member at Orchard Hill Village and at the Upper Mill School. And I have been in this district since two thousand and two. This evening I am speaking as the M T A Vice President and just sharing with all of you some of the awesome things that are going in or going on at the Orchard Hill School. Thank you for the opportunity to share just a few great things that are going on at Orchard Hill Elementary School under the tremendous leadership of Dan, Lisa, Jen, Jessica, and Abby. Our school community continues still to grow and thrive. I will start off with just a few items and then I will be followed by my head building rep, Maria Galinas. Melissa Patani, our kindergarten counselor, chairs the Cubs Helping Cubs Initiative, which is up and running and started in November. In November, they collected food for five communities, which should be five families in our community in need for a full Thanksgiving meal. Some of the other events are some of the other initiatives they have done. They have been fulfilling families' day-to-day needs such as winter coats, winter gear, clothing, diapers, wipes, and gift cards to ShopRite as well as automotive fuel. In addition, they have paid the utility bills for a family in the community that was in great need of assistance. There are nine families who submitted for holiday wish lists that they are currently working on. And they have sent out a genius list to staff, school community members, and families who are interested in donating and helping these people. All donations are collected effective as of this evening so that families can pick them up on time to prepare. They are getting six Christmas trees, excuse me, they have already collected six Christmas trees and stands for Cub families that are in need of one, and they were disseminated on the Fourth of December. Finally, as the year moves forward, Miss Patani, along with her team, their goal is to support these families on a monthly basis for day-to-day items, bills, gift cards to help with food, that help with food as well as fuel. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maria Galina, so I work at Orchard. How else would I have to share? I'm going to be stopped that happening.
Ms. Galinas, make sure you speak in a way that we can hear you. Before you begin your public comment, will we stop the time? Would like to remind the public that you're interested in delivering a new business to the whole public comment. You will please leave your seat at this time so that you can sign in. By way of a Google Chromebook there. Good? Yes, thank you, Ms. Galinas.
All right, so I also wanted to share some of the good stuff that happened at Orchard. And Ms. Satterland, our tech teacher, celebrated Augmented and Alternative Communication Month by having our students who use iPad to communicate require fast harmonic morning announcements. It was fantastic. Suzu Ali, this happened in, I'm sorry, in November. Suzu Ali is not just for license fees, but about being thankful for what we have and doing to those less fortunate. Mrs. Picurillo, second grade, second grade graders, although of graders, did a talent project with a lightest promised soup kitchen in Trenton on November fifteenth. Students and teachers donated healthy individual-sized snacks. They decorated bags and added a variety of snacks, each for a parent to bring to a soup kitchen. And Ms. Martucci's, Martucci's, physical education class experienced a fun Halloween obstacle course to Halloween music. During the event, students worked in low lights and appreciated their other physical senses. Thank you.
Thank you. So here you see no other new business from the public to the board. Our new business, public comment section is now closed. Now with the final one. The next to final part about the agenda this evening is our action agenda items. So I knew that I'm not going to be talking to the Board of Education, approving action agenda items, one point one to four point two. The floor is now open for discussion.
Sure. I'd like to ask if the ability is two, three? We decided two, three, it's a research project?
Two point three.
Educational research project approved. Why are you related to the elementary school? Educational research project.
That is following our board policy, a teacher in graduate school has a capstone project to perform, and it has to do with serving teachers. It has nothing to do with students. And so the board does have to approve anybody's research projects.
Any other discussion points for the action agenda? Yeah, we did.
I'm sorry, I do have a question, just in two point four, I just read it and it says to approve the programs that you just discussed this morning, this evening, but we're not in the approval stage.
Yes, so it needs to approve the entire program of studies. And we have highlighted the new additions here. So it's the entire program of studies and then we're just highlighting. So it's the entire program of studies, and then we're just highlighting these are the new classes that are in there, instead of just saying approve it and expecting you to know what person.
I apologize. I forgot to move on in the, um, class identification, staffing, and the lighting. Got it, got it.
Mr. Carlson. Ms. Dowling.
Yes.
Ms. Eliak.
I approve all of them except for, uh, I abstain from three point three.
Ms. Harris. Ms. Spina.
Yes.
Ms. Leck, your junior.
I will also abstain from three point three, everything else, yes.
Mr. Todd.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer Walls.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We have reached the conclusion of our Tuesday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three Open Public Board meeting of the Montgomery Township School District. It is currently nine p.m., I'm very excited. About this effort, um, we wish everyone a happy holiday season, um, whatever that shall be that we celebrate with your family, friends, and loved ones, and a happy new year, and our teachers, and our, um, drivers, and all of our staffing administrators, and counselors, and social workers, secretaries, everyone, for their hard work and diligence so far. The school year, um, and we wish anyone that has received, so at this time, um, should there be no objections, I move that we adjourn our Tuesday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting at this time. So who? Back up. Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or objections? Have a wonderful twenty twenty-four, everyone, and thank you so much for your attendance tonight. Good night, everybody.